Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 20th, 2018. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer to adopt the agenda. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Item number one is a fire department donation. And, let's see here, we have Tommy Cherup of 1-800-BOARDUP, and I'll meet you out front, gentlemen.
So, where are we going to start with this microphone? With you, Chief? All right.
Mayor, councilmembers, Tommy Cherup from 1-800-BOARDUP is here to make a donation to our smoke detector and fire stop program for kitchen hood systems. He's going to make a donation to the program with that.
Thank you, Chief, Mr. Mayor. It's our pleasure to do this at 1-800-BOARDUP and partner company 24 Restore. We love to honor those and to serve those to serve others. And we look at those that serve others and we donate $5,000 each year to a department that does that. And it was no question this year who deserved it more. Coon Rapids has displayed an amazing opportunity for the community. You guys do a great job for them. You really put the effort forward to them. And we wanted to show our appreciation what you do for your community. And we wanted to give you the check for $5,000. And we couldn't be happier what you're going to put it towards because our objective is that we donate to you to give to a cause of your choice. And couldn't think of a better cause for us to go to, so we're extremely grateful.
Okay. With that, I'll just say a couple words. First of all, thank you, Tommy, for the generosity. The money will be well spent. Basically, what we do is we put in smoke detectors in the home for residents that cannot afford them. And we also put in the kitchen fire stops, go into kitchen hoods, so if there's a fire on the stove, it'll extinguish the fire. So we have, the $5,000 will be put to good use. And with that, as long as I have the microphone, I'll remind people that smoke detectors are very important to have. They save lives. And we remind you that we need to test them once a month. If they're battery operated, we change the batteries when we change the clocks back and forth. And last but not least, the smoke detectors are good for 10 years. Once they get to that point, they need to be replaced. And as far as the kitchen fire stops, 60% of the fires start in the kitchen, so we remind people that when you're in the kitchen cooking, stay in the kitchen until the project's over. So with that, again, thank you, Tommy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Just going to endorse that, Chief, or?
Yeah, I want to just take a picture of it and send it.
Very generous. Nice way to start. Next, second item on our agenda, not nearly as fun, is to approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2018 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Johnson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the minutes are approved. We are now on to the consent agenda. First item on our consent agenda is to accept a right-of-entry agreement with ZHAO998LLC. Okay. They probably don't use that name for marketing, I guess. On August 17th, 2017, Amcon Construction, on behalf of ZAO988LLC, the property owner received site plan approval for the construction of two new retail buildings located on the far north end of the existing parking lot adjacent to Home Depot. The completed buildings are located at 3500 and 3510, 124th Avenue Northwest. The attached right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants and valves and to flush the water main system. The utility system within the site is considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain it. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate fire action, or fire protection for public safety purposes. So, we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with ZAO988LLC for their new retail buildings at 3500 and 3510, 124th Avenue. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve the final payment for Project 17-27, which is the Hanson Boulevard Water Tower. And we're looking at approval of change orders and final payment to Maguire Iron Incorporated in the amount of $8,794.37 for Project 17-27, Hanson Boulevard Water Tower. The next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 18-114, accepting a donation for the fire department. And this is, we've received a check for $5,000 from 1-800-BOARDUP to be used for, to purchase smoke detectors and kitchen hood fire. So we'll be adopting Resolution 18-114, accepting the donation from 1-800-BOARDUP. And the last item on our consent agenda, which is item number six this evening, is to adopt Resolution 18-116, accepting the donation for Lyons Coon Creek Park. The Coon Rapids Lions Club has been supporting Lyons Coon Creek Park since its construction in the late 70s. The donated funds will be used to assist with the updated entrance to the community garden and new playground equipment in the park. Lyons Coon Creek Park will be closed in 2019 for a complete renovation as part of the ongoing park bond referendum projects. And with this, we'll be adopting Resolution 18-116 to accept a $6,000 donation from the Coon Rapids Lions Club and a $50,000 donation from the Coon Rapids Lions Foundation Incorporated.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to accept consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Any discussion or questions?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grischowiak.
Do have a question on consent agenda number four, the final payment for the Hanson project. 35% over the contracted amount on the change order. I just have a question on that, is how did we get to a 35% over on the change order? And did our contractor provide us a quote before, or did we make those changes? And then also, maybe Mr. Hammer can tell us about what the liquidated damage charges that occurred on the project.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Grischowiak. We did get a quote on this. We had a stop work order back in July, you may recall, and I just pulled it up here. I sent out an email to the council back July 17th. As they were power washing, more delamination was occurring, more product was coming off. And so what we found was, the approach we were going to take to repair it was going to be a little more involved. So we went out, and we took two weeks, and that's why the project took longer than expected. We took two weeks off. We went to the paint manufacturers, we worked with other tower providers, and we came back with a three-coat system instead of a two-coat system, trying to, again, get that 12-, 15-year lifespan out of this. So knowing that I was going to see a significant change order coming, I wanted to make you aware of it back at that time. So, really, it was about $75,000 to $80,000 in additional costs. At that time, I reminded you that, you know, we're going to have a project cost of about $345,000 by the time it all is said and done, not only with this contract, but the consultant that was doing the inspections. We had $325,000 in the budget to begin with. So initially, we were significantly under budget with the project. Now we're slightly over budget. We added time on the backend. So the liquidated damages came in, that there was a few items that needed to be repaired. There were some doors that ended up with some sand in them, and so we had to change the locks. The overhead garage door, we had to change the spring on that. So it was probably about $1,200 worth of repairs that the city did, and so we just said that's the contractor's responsibility. We couldn't wait till after the project and do punch lists because we needed access to the site, nor did I necessarily want them to have time that we couldn't access the site. So we just went and made the repairs. We just backcharged those costs. And then there was probably eight or nine days' worth of over-contract at $500 a day, which I'll point out that because it went longer, I had to have an inspector out there longer. So more than likely, those costs go right back, and that's kind of what the liquidated damages are set up for, is it's going to take, cost us extra to have more people on the site. And so therefore, those costs probably get turned around and go right back to the consultant. Hopefully, that answers your questions.
It does, very well. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That was a very comprehensive answer.
Very.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Next item on our agenda this evening is item number seven, and it's a public hearing for vacation of a water main easement and adopt Resolution 18-112 for Coon Rapids Chrysler. On October 16th, 2018, council adopted Resolution 18-99 to consider the vacation of a water main easement and order a public hearing for Chrysler located at 10541 Woodcrest Drive, Northwest Coon Rapids. The vacation is being considered as part of Chrysler constructing a new building and with the intent to remove the existing building. The parking lot, water main pipes, and easements have to be reconfigured to accommodate the new building. A new easement will be provided as a separate document for the reconfigured water main pipes that serve the new building. The new easement will be brought to the city council for acceptance at a future date. October, on October 16th, 2018, council adopted Resolution number 18-99 to consider vacation. All utilities have been notified, and there are no objections. The process for vacating an easement under the city's charter requires a public hearing and passage of a resolution. So, does council have any questions before we open the public hearing on this? Anything else we need to cover?
Just one thing, on the vacation, there's a little bit of a, I think we did a little cut and paste here, and we didn't quite put it in the language we're looking for here. We're just asking that you conduct a public hearing and then consider adopting our Resolution 1812 to vacate the water easement. We won't need to order another public hearing down the road. I think one will be plenty at this particular moment.
Well, let's just see how many show up tonight. Then we'll decide. All right. So with that, we will open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address council on the vacation of the water main easement at Coon Rapids Chrysler? Anybody here to address council on this extremely hot topic? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and look to council for direction. Councilmember Demmer.
I would move to adopt Resolution 18-112 to vacate the water main easement at 10541 Woodcrest Drive, Northwest.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Any discussion?
Looks like that project is coming along well.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
All right. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. I just thought, wailed the gavel again for some reason, I don't know. All right. Now we are on to old business. Consider adoption of ordinance 2213 restricting parking on 124th Lane and Magnolia Circle. This proposal came about due to resident concerns regarding on-street parking in the area of the 124th Lane and Magnolia Circle intersection. The traffic review committee reviewed the area and agreed parking restrictions would increase safety by eliminating site obstructions in advance of the curve in the road. City staff sent letters to the area property owners requesting feedback regarding the placement of no parking signs on both sides of the street, as we've got in there in a graphic, and the staff received one favorable response on the matter. The city council introduced the ordinance on November 7th, 2018, and an attached follow-up letter was mailed November 9th. And we are now looking to adopt the ordinance restricting parking on 124th Lane and Magnolia Circle. This is a little section right, directly west of Foley, right next to the Holiday Gas Station, just south of Main Street there. So, council, need anything on this one?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move adoption of ordinance 2213 restricting parking on both sides of 124th Lane and Magnolia Circle intersection to a distance of approximately 130 feet west and approximately 100, or excuse me, approximately 90 feet south.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So, in case there's anybody actually watching at home, I get calls time from, you know, time to time where people say, "I don't want parking on my street," or whatever. I thought that it might be nice if you could just give a 10-second, 30-second overview on why you put no parking in some places and not others, and what the process is if someone is concerned. Because, like, in this case, it's a tight corner, and it looks like it makes a lot of sense, but other times, it's, you know, it's hard for me to answer why someone would or wouldn't want to bring something forward, so.
Well, Councilmember Demmer, you are asking me in 10 seconds. Probably not good.
45 seconds.
I think it was how long it took you to explain the water tower that's got him a little gun-sherry.
You've gone over budget before.
I will let you know that we take all requests from citizens, council, anybody, and we send them on to the traffic review committee, which is comprised of myself, the city engineer, police chief. We look at the volume of traffic on the road. We look at the site triangles, visibility. We look at tight corners. We look at density of housing and what the parking demands would be. Is it near school zones or parks? So we take a lot of those factors into consideration. There is no one-size-fits-all. So we do review and investigate every single one of them that comes in, and sometimes we make the recommendation and sometimes we do not. However, if we should decide that we deny and we recommend not to do it, there's an appeal process that you could take it to a safety committee, which is, I think, Chief Piper and some local citizens that comprise that, and you can argue your case and determine whether it comes before the city council. So we look at them all, but I can't give you a one-size-fits-all on why some are done and why some are not.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. We haven't voted yet, though, right?
We have not.
Okay. Councilmember Grischowiak?
I just wanted to ask, we introduced this ordinance on November 7th, and then the letter went out on November 9th. Doesn't say anything here that any of our constituents have, do we have any feedback from the November 9th letter?
Councilmember Grischowiak, I asked four o'clock today, and as of that time, what's in the memo is accurate. Both of these items, this one and the next one, we've received one call, and it was positive feedback. That's the only feedback we've received from two separate letters.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kicker?
I did go visit the site as well, and I did get a chance, somebody was outside, so I got a chance to talk to one of the neighbors, and it was actually not the 12452 right there on the corner, but 12438, so just one house down. And they seemed very comfortable with the restriction, so they were fine with it.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda, very similar. Consider adoption of ordinance 2214 restricting parking on Holly Street. The segment of Holly Street is included in the proposed 2019 street reconstruction, Project 19-3. While reviewing the area and collecting data for the project's feasibility report, staff observed excessive on-street parking on both sides of Holly Street between Springbrook Drive and 93rd Avenue. It's believed that parking restrictions on the north side of Holly Street would increase safety by eliminating site obstructions and a narrow roadway and allow larger vehicles to safely navigate the road in the commercial area. City staff sent a mailing to adjacent property owners informing them of the recommendation. No feedback was received, and an ordinance was introduced by the city council on November 7th, 2018. The attached follow-up letter was mailed November 9th, and we are now looking to adopt the ordinance restricting parking on Holly Street. And this is down there in Port Evergreen, kind of, I'm grasping, it's something that 610 Coon Rapids Boulevard.
Right next to Quick Trip. The clinic.
Next to Quick Trip. There you go.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Would like to move adoption of ordinance 2214 restricting parking on the north side of Holly Street from Springbrook Drive to 93rd Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item number 10 on this evening's agenda is planning case 18-17. Consider adoption of ordinance 2215 approving a zone change, 101st Avenue and Foley Boulevard E&amp;R investment. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning of property located at Foley and 101st from low-density residential to planned unit development to general commercial planned unit development. The site is 1.65 acres and currently vacant. The site is also the subject parcel in a PUD amendment to construct a 100,000, 800-square-foot temperature-controlled self-storage facility, and the amendment will actually be later this evening. The zone change was initiated because of a section, you know, I'm not going to go into all the details. What would council like to know? Would you like anybody to present anything again?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I have several questions.
You have several questions?
I do. Sorry, I couldn't.
Who would you like up here?
So, I don't know if Mr. Harlecker is probably, or Mr. Freely, whatever. So with a change to general commercial, that is the most liberal of designations of our commercials within the code, the most permitted uses. But there are a couple of things that are conditional, so like a commercial self-storage or outdoor storage is a conditional within that zoning. So it's not necessarily permitted, it needs a condition to be approved, correct?
Yeah. Commissioner Geisler and Mayor Cook, the PUD overlay is still in place, so even though the underlying zoning is general commercial, any change of use would have to go through a PUD amendment, and the council has quite a bit of discretion as to whether they want to allow that PUD amendment or not. So, just because it's listed as a conditional use or a permitted use in the zoning code as the general commercial district doesn't necessarily follow in the PUD. Council and commission has a lot more discretion.
Just, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear, that just because it's that liberal use, that it's still, if it didn't have the PUD, it would be conditional, and with the PUD, it definitely is conditional in that whatever goes there still has to meet a lot of criteria. My personal preference is with how this site is next to low-density residential, I would have rather seen it as a community commercial or a general commercial, or community commercial or neighborhood commercial versus general, just because of the proximity to neighbors. But because we have the PUD and can actually have more restrictions and understand what's going there, I will support it, but that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that it's got to be the right thing for the neighborhood to go in that parcel, in my mind.
Okay.
Done. Fair.
All right. I guess I would just, we don't have a motion yet, right?
No.
So I would just say, at the planning commission meeting held on October 18th, no one spoke at the public hearing. The commission discussed the zoning of the other parcels in the PUD. The underlying zoning of the apartments and the Holiday Station is low-density residential two. The commission noted it would be worthwhile to consider rezoning these parcels in the future so that the zoning reflects the way the land has been developed. But then the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed zone change. And then we introduced it November 7th, and here we are tonight, looking at it.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
In planning case 18-17, I'm moving approval of ordinance 2215 to approve the proposed zone change based on the four listed findings that are in the report that we have on the agenda. I would note that I believe a two-thirds majority vote of the council is required for the zoning change.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I think we got your two-thirds majority there.
Yep.
All right. Item 11 on our agenda is to consider a resolution calling for a public hearing to establish a tax increment financing district 1-33, Port Evergreen. Mr. Brown, you want to hit the highlights on this, or?
Yeah, I can. I mean, the council considered this proposal. We'll have a couple work sessions over the last couple months. Real Estate Equities is a St. Paul-based developer. They propose a 184-unit workforce apartment project on this site near the intersection of 94th Avenue and Springbrook Drive in the Port Evergreen District. It's a vacant site between five and six acres or so. There was a previous apartment proposal on that site about seven or eight years ago that never materialized. The site has sat vacant since. It's guided by the Port Evergreen Master Plan for High Density Residential Development, so a project of about this scale is allowed by the zoning there. The council has asked to consider a resolution this evening calling for a public hearing for a new TIF district on the site. That public hearing will be held, if approved, on January 16th of next year. In the meantime, staff would work with our financial advisor to compile the documentation for establishing that TIF district. We did complete an analysis of the financials of the project, believe that the TIF request is warranted. The request is for about $1.4 million that would be essentially rebated to the developer over a period of about 15 years. So for an affordable housing TIF district, we can go for a maximum of 26 years, so this would not go to that maximum duration. It would just be for a period of about 15 years. Provided this resolution is adopted, the developer would begin, or would continue work on architectural drawings, so it would go through the land use approval process. And the project is structured as a 4% tax credit project, so they would submit an application to Minnesota Housing for those tax credits. There would also be conduit bond financing involved, that the city would consider some additional approvals down the road. So, can answer any questions? We have representatives from Real Estate Equities here as well, if there are any further questions.
So, Mr. Brown, it's too early to consider architectural things on this. Is it, is it too early to consider, so, is 184 units, that's, that's the way it is? So, it's like, it isn't, it isn't later we can talk about the density, it's going to be 184 units?
Well, that's what the proposal is that's before you. As I said, it still has to go through the land use approval process. I mean, our general indication is that a project of that scale is allowed by the zoning. You know, it's not to say that things can't be tweaked here or there. You know, obviously, a change in the number of units would likely change the financials of the project, it may change what that TIF request would ultimately be.
All right. Council, Councilmember Demmer?
So, just as a, this is calling for a public hearing, calling for opening up the possibility of using TIF, so that's the state that we're in, and this land is, it appears not likely to just suddenly be used without TIF, so it gives the city flexibility in how to develop the land should the project meet the needs of the city. So I think it's reasonable to open up the public hearing for TIF and go from there, because I do think, you would need that flexibility to develop this land at this point. So, I will move to adopt Resolution 18-113, calling for a public hearing to modify redevelopment project area number one and establish tax increment financing district 1-33.
Second.
We have a motion by Demmer and a second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Grischowiak?
I have a question maybe for council. If we adopt this resolution tonight, calling for a public hearing, do we, does the public hearing come first, or do we also, as step number two, establish the incremental financing district 1-33 tonight?
Your honor, Councilmember Grisnovia, at that January 16th meeting, you would be asked to hold a public hearing, and after that public hearing, you'd be asked to approve some additional resolutions and documents that would create that district. So that would occur on that January 16th meeting, and then everything would be filed at a date after that.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is that I do believe utilizing tax increment financing to support the development of affordable housing is appropriate. I just want to make sure that the council and the community, you know, considers everything first. And I have asked staff for some comparable units, and I didn't really get any comparable units, and to staff's defense, there really aren't that many. I found one that's under construction in Columbia Heights. I also called around then today to some, some local apartments to talk about the affordability aspect, and I got a little bit more information on that. To me, it just doesn't feel like I have enough information right now. It's like I haven't done enough due diligence to even vote on this. I will probably vote to have a public hearing, but, you know, keep in mind that if we do develop a TIF district, that it, we essentially forego taxes for at least 15 years.
No, we forego the tax increment.
Yeah, we, right. The base is there, but the increment will be gone for about 15 years. So essentially, you know, we would be creating a large neighborhood without any funding to support the growth of our city, so. And that's not just the city and the public infrastructure, but also the school district financing, including the recent referendum that passed, the $248 million in Oak County, or, excuse me, Oak Haven School District referendum. So, again, the clarification is there that we're just holding the public hearing tonight and not establishing the district itself. Those are just some of my concerns at this point.
So we have a motion and a second, and, so just for a clarification, so we're not establishing the tax increment financing district tonight, that'll be at, after the public hearing. So we're really not doing anything tonight except voting that, that we're going to have a public hearing on this. Mr. Frenelius?
That is correct. It's just establishing the hearing date tonight.
Okay, Mr. Stanwell?
And, Mayor, council, and it also gives staff to go ahead to prepare those documents and work with our consultant, because there's amount of work that would need to be done in order for us to sort of prepare to develop that district. And so we would set forth about doing that, hold that public hearing in January, and then at that time, you would make a decision on whether or not to create the district.
Mr. Brody?
Just one little point of clarification. The memo references January 16th. Just to be clear, our council meeting and that public hearing is actually on Tuesday, January 15th. So if people are interested in coming, that they come on Tuesday, the 15th. And that's what the resolution indicates.
Let's have the public hearing on a night where we're all here. Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
For me, there's, you know, kind of the decision, and we've talked about it a little bit at work sessions, where you have pieces of land that are vacant in the city and have been vacant for a long period of time, and we have a need for this kind of housing in the community. And to be able to move forward, we need to be able to say, how can we help our citizens? How can we serve our community to meet their needs? And this is one way that we do it. Is TIF a little bit of a trade-off? Absolutely. But we do, you know, there's a lot of other things that the city can gain by having a nice, complex, more residents who can bring business to the city, and it's, it's part of a whole system, and we all have to work together in how, you know, you bring those newer families into the city, and then they can want to stay here because we've got the great things in our city to make them want to be there. So, you know, I absolutely am supporting, we need to go forward with the public hearing, and want to make sure that, you know, anybody in the community, if you have a voice, come to the public hearing. But it's something that is, I believe, a good thing for the community.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of TIF when it comes to, like, when we used it on Coon Rapids Boulevard to tear out the old Frank's Nursery and Crafts. It was a really old, bad building, and we used the TIF to get it back to a vacant lot so they could build a new building, and that made sense. When we've got a, just a piece of vacant land and we're just using TIF for tearing out trees, I'm not a fan of that. But we're not committing to anything tonight, we're just setting a public hearing tonight. Okay. So. Councilmember Grisnovia?
I mean, to that point, I think you have a good point there, to Councilmember Geisler's point about the land being vacant for a while. That is true, of course that's true, but that's true of any developed land. It sat vacant for a long time. If you look down 169 through, through Chaplin and Osseo, those fields sat vacant forever, and now they're springing up, you know, big new businesses, so this stuff does happen organically. And this is a kind of a unique track. I don't think there are that many tracks like this available in the Twin Cities. So I do encourage our constituents to take a look at that public hearing, take a look at this project, voice their concerns, and let us know a little bit more.
Any other discussion?
My only contribution to that part of the discussion is that many of those developments that are happening in neighboring communities that appear to be organic are also being supported by tax increment financing. And so it's a tool that's widely used around the state of Minnesota, and it's widely used by some of our neighboring cities as well. This is in my ward, and I've taken a look at the project, and I think it would be a really nice project to bring in to the city. I think it's an important thing, too, because the specific site we're talking about there, I always talk about it as kind of the area behind the old tequila berries, because that's the way a lot of us look at it. But it is, it is a marker in terms of kind of a gateway to down Highway 10 through Coon Rapids Boulevard, and I think the, the scale and design of what is being proposed will be a nice feature for the city and improve the look of that corridor. So there are a lot of other benefits that come along with it, so I intend to support this project going forward through the tax increment financing and also through the development of the property. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item 12, planning case 18-13. Consider planned unit development amendment and final planned unit development site plan for self-storage facility E and R investment 101st Avenue and Foley Boulevard. Mr. Harlecker, you kind of went through the presentation on this before, or you wanted, or haven't you yet, at the council meeting?
I got some, just so people know what.
All right, perfect.
The site is located here, it was the subject of the zone change, 101st Foley, Highway 10. And it's a vacant parcel right here. This is the site plan that's being proposed. As noted earlier, it's a 100,800 square-foot indoor self-storage facility. Access will be off of 101st, coming off the access that currently serves the Holiday Station. It'll be able to flow into the site here. The other access is the existing driveway that comes in, is behind the Holiday Station, it deadends right here. Parking will be in front. It's a four-story building, approximately 50 feet high. Use the grading plan. Again, there's stormwater pond here. When you get to the landscaping plan, that's why you'll see landscaping will not be located here or along here, this is the stormwater treatment area. Here's the landscape plan. They are proposing landscaping across the front, along this island, that'll be between the two parking areas. And these trees here are on the apartment property to the south. There'll be some ornamental trees here, but because of the ponding, no trees are proposed here. The overstory trees, the trees like maples and oaks, will be oversized, code requires two and a half inches. They're proposing four-inch trees. Same with the ornamental trees, their code requires one and a half, I believe they're two inches in size. They're planting larger trees to try to have an immediate impact on the site and kind of soften the facade of the building. This is what the building will look like. It'll be a mix of materials, metal, concrete tip-up panels. This is the, I would call the south side of the building that faces the apartment complex. The red is, is the concrete tip-up panels, but it's got a brick imprint on it, so it looks like, like brick. This elevation here is the north side that faces 101st. These are windows across the front to try to give it more of an office look, along with metal canopies that overhang the top of the window, again, try to break up the facade.
Mr. Mayor?
This is the side of the building that faces east of the Holiday Station.
Mr. Harlecker, just one second, Councilmember Geisler?
So I had a question, and I figured I might as well ask while you're on, as part of the explanation. So, so can you be real clear and kind of show where, and is the window, is it a glass, clear glass? And is it truly going to be kind of like your normal opaque window that would normally be lights-out and dark when, like in an office when nobody's there? Or is it going to be a bright LED light behind it so you can see a hallway with what's inside there that I can see from a mile away?
I believe they're going to be clear and a light opaque. The applicant is in the audience tonight, so maybe he can explain better what the vision will be behind the glass and what they'll see. I'm assuming it'll be the doors, but they can answer that better.
I'm assuming it's going to be the ones that I drive by other places in the Twin Cities, which is, you know, so just as a point of reference, we got, we got a lot of complaints when, like the U-Haul, where there's that bright, the wider, and then you can look through and have the bright orange doors. My understanding of this kind of a facility is the glass, and it's a hallway with a very intense blue LED light, so it's not a warm, friendly, it's a very visible from long distances with a lime-green door. It's not a visual, and I want to make sure that I understand any homes, because this is a tall building. If I'm a home looking at that, I don't want to look out my window and see bright lime-green doors and a bright, very intense LED light. So I need to understand what this is going to look like in those neighbors coming out their windows, because putting a taller tree in is not going to go four stories high out of the gate.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. So one of the things that was helpful to me in the process, and it's only partially helpful, I think, is, is the perspective views that were submitted as part of the packet. In the, in this, thank you, in this architectural rendering, this is the view along Foley Boulevard, and the way that the building is oriented, first of all, yeah, understanding the topography there, even though it's a 50-foot building, it sits low in the lot because there's a hill there that goes from Foley down to the lower-level area by the Holiday Store. But that being said, there are no residential properties that would look at all into this perspective or into this side of the building, because this orients basically straight up Highway 10. And so the, it's the other side on the, on the Holiday Store side where there is some window stuff, and that really orients straight toward kind of the bright lights of the Holiday Station store, and then beyond the Holiday Station store, there are the, I'd call them kind of low-density commercial, well, they're not even townhomes, they're office spaces. And then the residential buildings are kind of kitty-corner to this in a way, and they really have garages that front, although they do have some, some residential windows that front out on that side. So I think there are very few, albeit there are some, residential impacts to this. I am kind of intrigued, though, by the, the concept, because a lot of effort, I think, was put in by the developer to propose a plan that would fit in as more of an office-looking building. And, and of course, that would be diminished a little bit by a thing that you could clearly see through the windows, it's not an office building. And so I wonder what thought has been given to that. And then in the perspective that shows the view from Foley, there's a whole line of trees there that kind of screen the building, there you go. And I think the, that was not in the landscape plan, but I think that's because the trees in that area, as it's depicted here, are actually on city-county property, right-of-way property. And do we have any control over what we put there, or could put there, to further make it look a little bit more like this perspective view? Those are my kind of questions and thoughts as it relates to this.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, to me, my concern is if I was naively looking at these renderings, it's fine, I like it. But if you stop and look at what is really being put there and look at how those buildings look, this is not what you're going to get. And I want to know very clearly if this is what it's going to look like, or if it's going to be clear glass with a bright blue LED light that I can see lime-green doors.
Mr. Harlecker, this isn't the first one of these buildings in town. Do we have any pictures of one of these, what they look like after dark, or?
We do not. There are other ones in the north metro. Each one is a little bit different. Some of them, I know there's one, I'm going to drive down along 494 in Minnetonka, I believe. It's got what, Councilmember Geisler's concerned about, it's got the bright lights.
If you go up like 169, it's in, kind of on the Osseo corner of 81 and 169, kind of across from, for Plague Farm, right? And you can see that building. I mean, it's incredibly effective as a commercial building. And that's where, when I had the questions about the zoning, because the general commercial is the least restrictive and the most liberal of those zoning codes, but a storage facility is still conditional use in that most liberal area because of the potential impact of those kinds of buildings in commercial areas. I'm not willing to vote for anything until I know what the actual renderings and what this thing is going to look like and get some pictures.
Mr. Harlecker, you said the folks are here?
Correct.
Do you think they would have an answer? Do you think they would have any additional information? Or do you want to continue?
Well, regarding the landscaping, as you can see here, excuse me, on the grading plan, majority of the trees are on the county right-of-way property. Once this property line is firmly established, we'll know how many trees are going to stay and which ones might be removed. Once that's figured out, the applicant has agreed to add additional trees where needed along here to provide more, more screening along the Foley Boulevard property line.
Okay. Mayor? Councilmember Grisnovia?
Councilmember Griscovian? Any clarification? Tonight, we're just considering the PUD amendment and the site plan. This, has this been in front of the planning commission?
Yeah.
For this, so we have the final renderings, right? I mean, this is what we're seeing, this is approved by the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, so, yeah, so if you read the, the planning minutes, I didn't get to watch the, the conversation, it was afforded to, it was not a unanimous. Commissioner Stevenson and Nad Block, I believe, were the two that voted against this, and had conversations. And in the conversation, I was a little disappointed that they didn't understand what they were approving. They, in my opinion, after 16 years on planning, didn't do good due diligence on this one to understand what this building truly is and what it will look like. And to that point, it's because I think they were looking at the renderings and taking them at face value and didn't dig deeper. And so for, for me, either I want to have the applicant explain to us that this rendering is exactly what that's gonna look like, and that it will be, you know, kind of that office look, and it's not going to, to be clear glass with bright blue LED lights and neon green doors. And if it is, I want to see redone renderings to show me what it truly will look like.
So this, this is probably what it'll look like during the daylight, just as the renderings are?
I don't think so.
Really?
No.
Okay.
I don't think so. And I may be the only one, but I will not be supporting this, so.
Councilmember Decker?
So I would like to point to the audience that looks like trying to get in, because I actually have driven by a few of them and have really similar things that I've noted that they are, they're designed to look like office buildings but are clearly not office buildings when you drive by them. And, and not all of them necessarily, I haven't driven by them all at night, but even a simple thing like daylight-controlled curtains would almost completely solve the issue. So I, I'm just sort of curious what, what sort of modifications are in mind for, for this one.
At this, oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members Greg Hayes, Eber Construction, Ian R. Investments, and I brought along our architect, Todd Mohegan, Mohegan Hansen Architects, who also did the medical office building across the street, who's the architect for that. To answer your question about what you see is what you're going to get, is what you're going to get, because through the PUD process, our application details and specifies all the materials, all the colors, all the elements, the building, and through the PUD, we can't deviate from this. This is what you're going to get, is what that elevation is and the colors and the materials. It's all primarily Class 1 materials, which is your highest quality materials.
Not questioning materials, I'm questioning the view of the glass and what you can see through the glass.
The glass on parts of the building, in this view, the, towards Foley Boulevard and 101st will have some transparent glass. There will be some lights in there, but they also can dim down at night, actually less bright than the Holiday Gas Station next door, and it doesn't have any bright blue lights in it or anything like that, LED lights in it. Actually quite attractive. We've built these around town, Eden Prairie, Plymouth, we have one going in Maple Grove, we just completed one in Brooklyn Park, we have one under construction in Brooklyn Center. Similar high-quality materials and high-quality look, they've been well-received throughout the communities they've been in. But this is the elevation and the materials and the look. If you're looking for a nighttime view, we didn't prepare a nighttime view, but we did take a lot of time, energy, and effort so that these perspective images do reflect the actual size of the trees that are along Foley Boulevard right now. We're not pretending they're bigger or anything. We actually went out and measured them, so we know, so.
That's right.
Councilmember Geisler?
So, basic questions. So with the individual storage unit doors, are they, what color?
Don't know yet specifically, depends on the brand at the end. They could be blue, they could be red, they could be green, they'll be color-complemented, they're not overpowering.
So, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, if we would look at conditions on, on this that would be related to, you know, you know, that light or that view, you know, that it would need to be in the warmer tones of interior lighting that could be seen from the exterior, that the, the color palette of any interior that is highly visible from that outside needs to be part of that PUD color palette and plan, so like those materials that, you know, because if I have a view in that's a softer light and it's, you know, a wood-grained or a wood-brown colored door or something that's not sticking out at me, I probably am gonna be less note, it's gonna be less noticeable if I'm sitting in my backyard or looking out at this unit. And that, that's really my concern is the residents who live by here and grant, some of it is just facing towards Highway 10 and nobody's gonna live there, right? But when, when this is something that needs conditions for the zoning, in a regular case and in a PUD, when we've got it next to low-density residential, we have to be very careful at how this impacts the residents. And, you know, so, you know, I don't know if it's, you know, willing to, you know, put additional conditions on lighting and, and those interior spaces that are highly visible?
Well, there's no transparent glass facing residential units. You could argue that kitty-corner, two blocks away, a house, there's two houses that theoretically could be staring in and seeing that, but there is no transparent glass on this building that is facing towards a residential housing unit. We've taken a lot of effort with staff to make sure that it doesn't do that, and, and yet it has a lot of glass on all sides, so it does look like an office building, and most people think, would probably think it's an office building when they drive by it.
So that north elevation is one that's tied to, if you flip back, that would be visible from those houses that are on that north side of 101st, right?
Down the block on 101st to the right, to the east, there's, I didn't count, but there's.
Just, I'm Todd Mohegan, Mohegan Hansen Architects and Interiors. If you look across the street on the satellite, the trees that you see to the west of our site that are in, that's in the county, right-of-way, you can see on the satellite that those trees are visible.
I'm not so worried about the west side.
Exactly, but I want you to compare that to what's on the north side of the street. The density of those trees are at least twice to three times the density. And as you go along the, the street 101, I think you can notice the density of those trees, and...
And that helps, that helps in the summer.
That's correct, but also in the winter, the density of those trees, they're deep and they're thick. And so the majority of the light, which we can put on, you know, a control for lumens that would not exceed the intersection or Holiday, and to me, that's, that's a fair restriction.
Okay.
At that point, it doesn't really matter what the color of the doors are. The color of the doors are part of the branding, which is important for this to be a viable project. And so whoever that they're trying to get as a owner of the property, that will be a very important part of this to be a successful project. If we limit the lumens on the light, I think that's, that's a very fair and equitable arrangement. Most of the, if you look on the elevations, the, the glass is facing towards the intersection, and it's minimized as it goes to the east. It's just a turnaround. I mean, just to make the building fit into the neighborhood. So to kind of summarize, you know, we're, and if, if you look at the landscape plan also, that if you're down low on a one-story building, we have new vegetation that will be on the north side that's fairly dense, and then we have trees and landscaping that's across, you know, 101, which is a busy street. There's lots of streetlights, I mean, not streetlights, not only streetlights, but car lights that are actually going to be brighter than anything that will be there as far as on, on the building itself when we limit the lumens that will be in there. Thank you.
Councilmember Decker?
So, you know, I get, I get branding. I will say absolutely frankly that every one of those I drive past, the doors are the ugliest part. Right, I mean, it's fine that the company that wants to own it wants orange, but it's, if, if the intent is to make the glass clear so that we can see orange from the highway, then it doesn't look like an office building anymore. And so that's, that's a little discouraging, because I was hoping you could frost the glass a little or do something to make it look more like an office building and, and less like it had bright green or bright orange doors inside of it. So that's, that's unfortunate. That is, that is, because I've, I've always wondered, driving past those, why they choose to make that part so visible? And, and that's, that's the answer, is there's an orange company and a green company, and the green company wants you to see the green doors?
Yeah.
Boy.
Yeah, I kind of went from being really excited about all the glass, to not so excited about all the glass.
This is an enormous building, and I, I know that it's four stories and, but, but it's, you know, I was, I drive by that quite a bit, and I was looking at the street view maps and everything and just comparing how tall the three or the two-and-a-half-story buildings are next door. I mean, you're gonna see this from a long ways away, and I, I don't know, bright orange from a long ways away is not, I mean, unless we're the Dutch soccer team, I, I just don't know.
I would address and say that, just for comparison's sake, the Holiday gas canopy is way brighter than what we're proposing, and that brand and that lights and the blue strips and LEDs that go around. And actually, this building will do a lot to help shadow some of that, control some of that. We live in a state where it gets dark at 5:00 at night, so there's lights, I can't change that. And we actually minimize the amount of signage on the building because of some of that image and branding. So I think it does a good complement mix of the uses, and by interjecting the high-quality materials, I think it really does a good job of presenting a high-quality image, high-quality project, high-quality product, which then I think echoes well for all the other buildings in the area. You know, it's a high standard to meet.
For me, I'm, I'm less concerned about the visual from that west side that's basically parallel to Foley, because there's an awful long way you have to go before there's people other than commercial, like going to the, the movies or what have you, or driving down the highway, and that can, right? But once we get to those other three sides, and I get that Holiday is a bright canopy, but it's not a three-story canopy, it's not a four-story canopy. And when you can look and say, I can look at my window shades and I can say, I'm gonna put my shade here because I cannot see that, and I can want to see the sky or something up, and now I'm going to be seeing bright doors, I, to me, we have to do something from the visual impact to the residents on the other three sides of that building. And I, I find with, you know, maybe there's more glass on that other side to, to give them that visibility, but that we protect and make the other three sides more office-related, frosted kinds of glass, you know, really, you know, tone it down as much as we can.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Johnson?
I'd just like to share a couple of points. So if I understood, Councilmember Geisler, what you're saying is you're not as concerned about the west side because that faces up Highway 10.
Correct.
And, and I appreciate that. And then, of course, on the south side, there is no glass. So I, I don't see that there would be an impact, and I think that was done out of respect for the, the limited amount of residential properties that are there. So what you're really talking about is the north side and the east side, and the east side fronts right on a gas station. And then beyond the gas station is the office-like commercial that we talked about. So you have the little narrow end on the north side that then looks across 101st Avenue and frankly, the entrance to Highway 10 and that intersection there to a strip of residential properties that really are oriented east and west, and they're not oriented south toward, toward the gas station or toward this site. So frankly, I think they've done a nice job in kind of respecting the residential component in the neighborhood and limiting the impacts on that. And, and I think that, that there are a few impacts to, I, I would never say none, because I suppose that in a few of the, the residential properties, if people are out in their backyard, they're already impacted by the lights at the gas station and, and the highway noise and things like that. And I actually live kind of kitty-corner across this, and every winter, I look out at a big orange home sign that's across Highway 10. And, and it's just part of living in, in that neighborhood, and it's a wonderful neighborhood. But I don't even think my property would be impacted by this, in part because the other thing that's in the area that's all lit up at night, especially in the summer, is the ballparks at, at the Aspen Ballpark, Aspen Park. So there's a fair amount of light in, in the area anyway. The concept of it being a four-story building, I actually think is interestingly complementary to other buildings that we've discussed even on the agenda tonight. You're talking between a quarter and an eighth mile away, we just approved a 180-some unit, you know, or at least a conversation about, about, about public financing to support a 180-some unit, and I hope it gets built. And frankly, it would be people that live in that building that could benefit from this opportunity in the neighborhood. And when you look at the proposal for that building and you look at this building and the design elements, they're actually somewhat complementary. And so I, you know, I intend to support this, it's, it's, it is literally the neighborhood that I live in, and I've not heard anything negative about it, and frankly, I've given it some, some thought, because I will tell you, my first reaction was, hmm, I don't know if it's gonna work there. I'm not sure if that's the right thing. And I do see that they've made an effort to make it fit in with the office building that's kitty-corner from that, so it's not a detractor from that, and they've appropriately screened some areas, and it sounds like they're even open to, to capping, if you will, the, the lighting component so it doesn't exceed what's already in the, in the neighborhood. So I'd hope that people would consider those parts of this too. Thank you.
Mayor? Councilmember Griscovian?
Added that, especially the part about respecting the residential neighborhood here, of course, that's a goal for everybody. I did take the time to drive over to this site because I wanted to kind of get an idea of the size of this, so I stood in the Holiday parking lot. I drove down Dogwood Street and stood in front of those, a couple of homes right there, those wouldn't be impacted. Then I actually took the time to sit in that apartment building parking lot, and I talked to three people. I explained who I was and what was being proposed here, and all three of them said, no, why would we have a problem with that? Two of them all made the comment that we need more storage like this. They said, a lot of people in this very unit could use a storage place like that. So I think that and the points that Councilmember Johnson just made, give me enough to vote for this project. for this project.
Let's see here, where are we at?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geiser?
Without any alterations or additions to the recommendations, I won't support it. The question is, if the applicant would be willing to specify that it would be, would not, that would be a lower lumen light, that it, especially, you know, nighttime kinds of things, and that it would not go past that intersection or the roadway, that you would be looking at, I don't know what, I'm sure we have light pollution kinds of levels to look at where that would be to ensure that we would have to measure before this site goes in and looking at what the delta would be with this site to ensure that, you know, as I get into the 101st Avenue, that we don't exceed certain levels. And then, also adding something about that it would not be, that we would not be using an LED light in the cool range that would be the illumination for anything being shown through that glass.
So, to your point, Councilmember Geiser, we do have an ordinance that would deal with the lights. Would they, I'm sure light would leak off the property? Yes?
I mean, we don't have any problem maintaining or matching the light levels, not exceeding like the Holiday or the intersection or anything like that. LED lights, which are more efficient by nature, are hard to make a warm tone. We'll be conscious of that, we're always conscious of that, because a warm tone is an inviting tone. Bright, cold color is a, doesn't feel real warm. So, by nature, we're in that, trying to be in that color tone.
To me, that's kind of a key, just on how visible, and we look at those with the streetlights. If you remember our conversation with the different color bands when we were looking at streetlights, and it's about how fatiguing and how ineffective those bright blue lights can be, and that warmer tone can be safer. And, you know, so I would, if we would look at adding additional recommendations, talking about the limiting of the light pollution from the site and the visibility of that, and then that any exterior or interior lighting visible through that glass would be done in a warmer light tone.
Mr. Harbinger, do we have anything?
Maybe a more technical term?
Okay.
Would be color temperature?
Yep, okay.
Would be in the warmer tone.
And, I don't know, Mr. Hammer, do you remember off the top of your head or have anything to reference what the different color band ranges are that if we need to be more specific with? I wanted to, I want to say it's something, was it in like the 5,000 or 6,000 range?
From what I recall, we were looking at street lighting somewhere in the 3,500 to 4,500 range.
Okay.
With those being beyond that.
The 4,500, the higher is the warmer. Is that correct?
No, no, it's the color of the, I think we're getting lost in some of the lighting. When we prepared our PUD application, we also had to do a lighting plan that showed we were casting no additional light off the site, and we aren't with, even with the light behind the glass. We're very understanding of the concern and the comment being addressed, and I believe we can adequately address that by saying we won't exceed what's already there in a brightness of light. In other words, which is what I think I'm hearing, don't make something that's brighter, you know, so the streetlights are a certain brightness, the Holiday is a certain brightness. You don't want this bright light behind-
I don't want it as bright as the Holiday. You know, is my, you know, and if it's asking too much, I mean, you may have the votes from the rest of the council, but it's-
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Johnson?
In the spirit of political compromise, I would like to make a motion that the council in Planning Case 18-13 approve the proposed PUD amendment and final PUD site plan with the 10 stated conditions plus an 11th condition, that the applicant will utilize interior and exterior lights in warm color temperatures not to exceed the lumen outputs of neighboring businesses. Is that sufficiently?
I think that, I think addresses the issue.
Mr. Johnson, love the sentiment, but the Holiday is a very cool light, and putting that much light at a four-story, I still wouldn't support, so.
Well, I thought it was clear in the, using warm color temperatures.
But the warm tones, that, warm, yep, but the output, when you have to look at the output of a Holiday store, that level of brightness coming out of the windows of an office building, to me, it just doesn't make sense.
I'm just saying not to exceed it. I'm not saying they can't turn the lights down.
Not to belabor the technical points.
Yes, please.
However, I did use my smartphone.
Google is your friend.
So, daylight lighting is what they're using at Holiday, which is 5,000 to 6,500 K. And so, if you use natural white, which is good for kitchens, is 3,500 to 4,100 K. And if you use soft white, which is warm light, which is more like soft task light, that's 2,200 to 3,000 K Kelvin. So, I think if we're in the, you know, natural white that's for kitchens, I mean, it's no more than the 4,100 K. I mean, I think that that, and what is your, do you know what you're using for your streetlights right now?
It's dependent on the volume and the width of the roads, but we're in that 3,500 to 4,500 range.
So, I think that that's, if we're in that tone, I mean, that's what you're setting already for your street lighting, I think that that would work.
Can we modify your additional thing to be that warm tones, not to exceed 4,100 K?
Yeah, I would propose then to amend what I stated, not to exceed 4,100 K output.
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer. Further discussion?
I will just say that I generally support the functionality and the kind of building. I'm not thrilled with the potential that the renderings are not going to look like what this building is going to look like in the end. I absolutely appreciate the flexibility with the representatives here today and to be able to work with this and have the discussion to try and get the right thing for the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries.
I abstained. I didn't make up my mind fast enough.
Okay.
So, it was passed anyway.
So, it was passed with six, Councilmember Geiser abstained.
We got her from a no to an abstention.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item 13 on our agenda is to consider Resolution 18-115, awarding the sale of $11,275,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2018A. Ms. Legg, anything you want to hit with this? We've had some pretty high horse horses sitting over here all night.
I know, I'm sorry.
Waiting to talk.
So, Mayor and Council, staff is recommending that you authorize the sale of bonds that we took bids on today. Jason Arswold is here from Ellers. He's going to explain it a little bit. The size of the issue has decreased a little bit because, well, it's decreased actually a little bit more than a little bit. It's down to 10,940. It was 11,275 before. The reason for that is the buyers would be offering more, a premium to buy the bonds. So, given that we get more money, they're doing that to write down the interest rates that they've stated on the bonds. That's a little confusing, but in any case, so the amount of the bonds has changed a little bit. But I will let Jason kind of explain the Moody's rating and any, the bids, too. You know, we had three bids on the bonds.
Okay. Sure.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, what we do have in front of you this evening is to consider awarding the sale of bonds. And then, you know, just briefly, and I know that we had talked about this previously with you, but just so everybody knows out there, that these were issued for a couple different reasons. There were some road projects, utility projects, and park improvements. So, that's what the bond issue was for. We did propose and executed on having this issue rated by Moody's, as we've done in the past, and so, that report came in and went out to all of the potential bidders. I think that the good news is that the city continues to be in a strong position. You know, you're rated AA1 by Moody's, which is one notch below the highest rating that you could possibly achieve. And I think in their report, I think the things that they highlight is that you continue to maintain strong reserves. You've got, you know, at least a 45% reserve that's been held there. You continue to receive high marks on how you manage the city and your, the way you budget and your policies around the financial management of the city. And so, I think those things were all reiterated and emphasized again in the report. And all of those things are helpful to help the good outcome with the bidding process. And so, we did take bids today in our office at 10:00. We received three of, three bids from three different underwriters, and those bids are summarized in a sale day report that we have for you. But what I want to point out is that the low bidder came in at a true interest cost of 2.92%, 2.9275. And when we talked about this proposed issue at the time of pre-sale, we were estimating at that time about 3.39% as far as what we might expect to achieve as far as the rates are concerned on the bond. So, with the competitive bidding process and the bids that we did receive, we came in a little bit better than we had initially anticipated. So, that's a good thing. I think reflects the city's strong position, reflects the positives in the rating report, and then just your history in general, you know, with the issuance of debt. And so, as Sharon mentioned, what we did receive was a premium, and that's very typical. Almost every single bond issue that we sell is a premium bond issue this year, which just means that they're getting higher coupons or interest rates on the individual annual maturities of the bonds, but they're paying you more for that than the face value for those bonds. And so, that, in this case, meant more proceeds for some of your park projects, and that's built into this as well. So, the action before you tonight is a resolution awarding the sale, and it is $10,940,000 is what it ended up being, down from the 11-plus million at the time of the pre-sale. And then, that resolution will award the bids, and then we'll go back and proceed to closing and making sure you have the funds for those projects that are out there. So, with that, I'm happy to stop and then answer any more detailed questions that you might have about the rating, the sale, or anything else.
I should have done this right away. Would you tell us who you are and where you're from, so if anybody's watching, they know why you're in here talking to us?
Sure, Mayor, and typically, I would do that, too, but I just missed that part. So, I'm Jason Arswold with Ellers and Associates, municipal advisor.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions? All right.
It's nice to see we have the same rating as Anoka County.
Councilmember Demmer?
So, first off, thanks for including the credit rating. That was kind of fun, although I still have no idea like what it means most of the time for if we add this on top of it, will it still be stable? But I'm assuming that it will based on what I read about you'd have to significantly increase debt to lower the rating. I found some really cool stuff in there that I thought maybe at some point we should talk about because they said, here are the things that could reduce it, and we might want to make sure nothing we're doing does those things. All that said, I would recommend adoption of resolution, move, adoption of Resolution 18-115, awarding the sale of $11,273,000 of general obligation improvement utility and park bonds, Series 2018A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Before we have a second, the amount we want to use, though, is-
Oh, darn it.
10,940,000, wasn't it?
Correct.
Second that.
That one.
Yep.
All right.
Sorry.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second, and the amount in there was 10,940,000 for Resolution 18-115.
I wanted the money.
Any discussion? Mayor? Councilmember Gruscovia?
I can ask Jason of Ellers, the successful bidder on the bonds, what was their effective interest rate? In here, you're mentioning between 4% and 3.5% based on the date of maturity, but-
That's not what you said. So, Mayor, members of the council, the individual, in the bid tabulation, so the low bidder, FTN Financial Capital Markets, proposed individual coupons on those bonds between 4% and 3.5%, so from the high end to the low end. And so, the true interest cost, though, also takes into consideration the purchase price of those bonds, and so, we use that to calculate the lowest bidder for the debt. And in this, so in this case, while those coupons are higher, the true interest cost is the 2.9459 number, which is the adjusted true interest cost with the adjusted purchase price.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Legg? I think that that bid tab is included in that big resolution that we handed out, yes. It's toward the end.
All right. Any other discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Councilmember Wells?
I believe next year, Ms. Legg will be in the audience asking many questions.
I'm going to be at full, watching TV. Questioning.
City council's on TV.
I know, that's what I meant.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Next on our agenda is the open-mic public comment portion. Jason, did you want to come back up and talk to us at open mic?
I'm good.
Okay, then I think we're going to move past open mic. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Counsel? Other business?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Definitely. Mr. Stemwell? Nothing? Really? Mayor?
I would just like to encourage the public to actually attend and look into that public hearing on January 15th for this proposed project. I think it's an important part of our community, has an impact on a lot of people, so I'd like to see as much feedback from the public as possible.
We have an, and we have an open house coming up November 27th for the street projects, right? Does that sound right?
Yes.
5:00 to 7:30 in the Civic Center here for, if you are part of any of the street reconstruction this year, we would encourage you to come into the open house, correct, Mr. Hammer?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Fridley, our neighboring Fridley just moved into their new city hall and Public Works and everything last Saturday, so congratulations to them. Mr. Hammer, do you have something else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out tomorrow, Anoka County Wellhead Group is going to be hosting a meeting here to go through kind of some of the Wellhead Protection Zones on a county basis. So, for yourselves and the general public, there'll be information on sealing wells and other things to protect the aquifers and community drinking supply. So, tomorrow, 9:00 right here in the council chambers for all those that are interested.
Three-hour opportunity to listen to Bart Biernott. He actually does a good job. He's really, really versed in this stuff, so. All right, I'll be here.
Will there be cookies?
I don't know. All right, any other business? Somebody want to get us out of here?
Do it, Jerry.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells, to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.